This conference will now be recorded.
At 5:37. So I'll give you a quick roll call. I'll just hand it off as workshop. Counselor Tybee, present. Counselor Burns, present. Counselor Rask, present. Counselor Belisus, present. Mayor Cox, present. Counsel to the city, Budlak, and city administrator, Ho.
Can you talk to the microphone? Thanks. Joseph, you got that, though? Okay. All right. So we are here for a workshop on homeless. We all have our packet in front of us. Or, you know, the materials we've got. I, you know, this is a workshop with us and N2N, so we open the meeting. Does anybody have any questions for John right off the bat?
Well, I think it'd be great to just get his, you know, I read his update, but it might be great to just have him update us.
I see.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council and distinguished guests. We were kind of under the gun at the meeting when we adopted the time, place, and manner regulations for the homeless. There was a chance that if we hadn't adopted it, we wouldn't be able to, you know, enforce against, you know, camping on public property if we didn't have a place designated. So we did that, but we also had some manner restrictions there, regulations such as breaking camp every day and not storing possessions on city property, et cetera. We had people from Neighbor to Neighbor show up and say they would be willing to work with the homeless people who needed assistance. And at the end of the meeting, council instructed me to work with Neighbor to Neighbor to come up with some other options on the manner and perhaps time and place regulations. And so I met with Lauren and also with Tanya from Neighbor to Neighbor. I've also handed out a copy of our ordinances to the people in the camp. I handed it out to Terry at Ray's. I've also shared all the materials in the packet and even the memo. I shared a draft of the memo with Lauren and Tanya before making it final and putting it in the packet for everybody. You can see the details in there. It's really a mixed bag when you're dealing with this population. There's a lot of materials from Neighbor to Neighbor that, you know, talk about the homeless population and how, you know, there's myths about homelessness and how they don't necessarily want to be homeless and that they, you know, are not really bad people. And I'm not, I don't think that's what our city regulations are about. There is some information in there about how did we get to this point? They talk about going back to the 70s of when institutions were closed. They talk about the economic recession and the downturn and the housing problem and things like that. So the part, and then the most recent article that I, that was just from, I want to say last week or two days ago, was about the judges on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals who oversees the courts that made the grants pass in Boise decision, which is actually based on a Los Angeles decision before that. And you can see they're struggling with their decision. They couldn't reach consensus to review it, and the Supreme Court declined to review it. But some of their comments, I think, are legitimate. And essentially, they, I think his name's Scanlon or Scanlon, he says that, you know, they're creating a burden on cities and the decisions didn't really consider the resources of the cities. So I'm not going to disagree that we have a homeless issue and that there's reasons for it, but, you know, when you look at the reasons they talk about, okay, there's drug abuse, perhaps, there's economic issues, perhaps, there's, again, I think there are also some, there was one comment in one of these materials that said there's no evidence of voluntary, voluntary that people want to be homeless. And I have personal experience where a person said they want to be homeless instead of living in a place that they could afford with their social security. So I question that statement from that author. But what, you know, so, okay, this population used to be served by state and federal mental health places, right? And those places have shuttered apparently. These populations used to be served by veterans associations on a federal level, and something is wrong there. These populations used to be served by our criminal justice system, and now we're seeing that that system is not working. So somehow the default is that cities must solve this problem. And I think that is completely upside down on a logical standpoint. The cities are probably, and especially our city, has got the least resources to address the issues that this population has. So I think that we should do the minimum. This, from a city manager standpoint, I work for the city, and you guys all alone, we work for the citizens, and so you all have been elected by the citizens, and this is how government works. But from an organizational standpoint, dedicating a lot of city resources, which are scarce, to this population, I think is just unsustainable. So, but it is the will of the council, and what you all want to do is fine, but I would love to hear, I see Doc Calhoun here, who is, I consider a friend because he's just a great guy, and be sure to represent these people, and I don't always agree with him, but I respect the heck out of him. And I see he's here. And again, Lauren is a fantastic individual, and Tanya's a fantastic individual. I think, I think, and by the way, none of whom of those work for the city or are with the city. They're not resources that we have, but they're people who live in our community and are part of our community. So again, we're trying to solve this problem together, and I would entertain any questions that you might have. I had an idea, if I could, that Doc, and this is something that I hadn't had a chance, it was something that happened after meeting with Tanya and Lauren. Tanya had worked at Coast Community Health, I'm not sure, and then what she said is before you, and Doc, if you want to come up to the microphone, I don't know, does anyone have an issue with having, okay. Yeah, no, they don't have an issue with it. So please, yeah, come it up, and then you got to, you got to pull the microphone pretty close to your speaking part.
You were 15 minutes late to your appointment, I'm sorry.
Wow, 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 I didn't know it was going to be that kind of a meeting. But anyhow, so what they were saying is, when Tanya was there, and she said what was really affected is they had a day center. And at that time, it was a trailer or something where the population could go and be out of the elements during the day, and maybe it was a resource center perhaps. And Tanya's done some amazing things, especially with one person that they got rehoused to her home, which is, by the way, in California. But, and then they were talking about the, remember we talked about, you know, this population had been served by mental health services, which in our state is at the state and the county level, the state, you know, Department of Health and Human Services, not the city. But they talked about that ADAPT, I guess the county services or, I don't know anymore, they staffed the ADAPT place, or maybe it's the state through the DHS, because I think the county mental health also just defaulted back to the state. But Tanya and Lauren were saying that the county's not up at ADAPT very often, they're there maybe one day a week or something, I can't remember, but.
They've had a heck of a time staffing that, and they remodeled that building on the corner, and they just don't have any staffs, so we can't even refer to them.
Here's, here's what I was thinking, and this is just an idea I had, but I think it might be a way to address the concerns. Because what I, what was developed, so, and it seems like, again, Neighbor to Neighbor, at first they were saying, we want to do this thing, but then we, and they had that plan, and they said we're gonna, they had all these rules, and their rules even said we're gonna move them every day and no storage and this and that. But then, when I met with Lauren and Tanya, and I don't know if the photo of it was in there, but they were saying, we'd like to have, you know, an area where people who are committed to transition could be, and then if people weren't committed to transition, my understanding, and I'm paraphrasing here, Doc, you can kind of step in, but they seemed to think, then, you know, if they were in the area that the city designated, that the city's rules would more or less apply for them, and the, you know, you can't, you have to break camp, and you can't store your stuff. And what they were thinking is that would be a, if the people who are getting, you know, subject to our rules, were getting, you know, breaking camp and not storing their stuff, and more or less, you know, roustied during the daytime hours and having to move around, if they saw that, oh, the people who are committed to change aren't having this happen, that that would be an incentive for them to commit to change. Now, the part about the committing to change was they were anticipating or talking about a location on our right of way that would be fenced off with special tents and services and things like that. But after we talked, and they told me that the ADAPT building was being underutilized, I was hoping, Doc, that maybe you and your organization, and whether it's Neighbor to Neighbor or even CCH, could have a conversation with the county, because they really said that day center would be very helpful to this population. Is there a way to better utilize that ADAPT building, have that be a place where the committed to change people could go, and we could just enforce our time, place, and manner regulations? And if they say, well, I really want to change, we go right over there, and that place has a fenced yard, maybe, and it has bathrooms? The other problems that I'm hearing is that the people who are, you know, working at Ray's, the checkers, have to clean the bathrooms at Ray's after these people are there, and when you talk to these people, your heart goes out. And it, you know, you wonder, is that what they, you know, signed up for when they took that job? So having, having the population right there is really a burden on that business and on the people who work at that business. And so, anyway, I would like to think, and this is just a proposal, and I don't know, Doc, if you're amenable to it, but is there a way Neighbor to Neighbor or even CCH could perhaps outreach to the county? And Tanya, apparently, has got some qualifications and designations and certificates and such. Is there a way you guys could work with the county and say, have that be the day center for this population? And, yeah, I know this is the first you've heard of it, I just, something I just thought of.
So my understanding is that ADAPT is a private nonprofit that deals with addiction in many counties in the state, and they have a contract to deliver addiction services primarily.
Sure.
And they have kind of fallen down in that contract. They, we watched them, when that building was, the blue building was for sale, my wife and I went and looked at it. This is kind of interesting, and it sold. It's not amenable to much. I mean, it's been set up almost like a doctor's office. I think it was a mental health office years ago, years before. And so I don't know if ADAPT, that's their building, and they paid for it, so I'm not sure.
Oh, they owned it, or the county owned it?
I think they own it.
Okay, all right.
They're, we met with them at one point a year ago, and they said, we're going to get people to staff it, and psychiatric nurse practitioners and things like that. I haven't been able to do it. It's just really hard to staff.
Yeah.
And we've talked to them recently about that, and they said, hey, we're busy building a new building somewhere else, and you're on our list, so to speak.
Sure.
I know that's useful. By the way, Tanya Ray and Julie Watson were, worked outreach for years with Coast Community until just two years ago or so. And originally, before the new clinic was there, there were two, I want to say double lights that were there that carried out outreach. And they have a mandate and a grant from the state, and maybe some federal money there, but, to provide for people that are, need help, indigent, homeless, and so they're involved. And I talked to Lisa Cobb, who now heads the outreach program, and they have two brand-new people coming in, heavens, to Port Arthur, full-time, to work outreach. So we're trying, Neighbor to Neighbor is trying to work with them to see what services they can provide and what they're mandated to provide. But, you know, I don't think that, we've also talked about the ramshackle building duplex behind that center that's for sale right now as maybe a small residential warming center type, multi-purpose thing.
Right.
We'd love to have a dwelling, but before that, we just need a place. And that's, since, by default, the area next to Ray's has been the center for several years since I've been here. You know, it made sense to see if we can make that more attainable. The bathroom problem probably could be fixed with porta-johns, and then also showering available. We give shower vouchers for the local showers, and we can shower people at Coast Community, brand-new facility there, which we have showered people or helped people shower.
Yeah.
The trash, you know, we're, Neighbor to Neighbor is just trying to ameliorate this problem that won't get better. You know, I read, there was an article just yesterday in, at NPR, it talked about the reasons for homeless. Unfortunately, everybody talks about the reasons and doesn't talk much about the solutions. But one of the reasons is we're anywhere from seven million to 14 million dwellings behind since 2008's crash. They just haven't been building. And with the prices of everything, there are a lot of people that just can't afford their rent anymore.
Algae, commodity now.
Yeah. So there's a lot of reasons, and, you know, some people, as you all know, are mentally ill, and some people are drug addicted, and some people just want to be free, and, you know, there's, it's a whole mix of humanity, you know? But it's not a problem that's going to go away, and as a small town, I'm so proud of this town, I think it's incumbent on us to figure out how to at least, to use a medicalish term, ameliorate the problem. How to make it less, how to make it more suitable to the community. So we're just looking for some permission to have a site, and Neighbor to Neighbor wants to try to manage it. And we'd really like to have a probationary period that you all could decide on, where you give it a go, see how good we can do. How, whether or not we can keep these people from causing a problem, or being eyesore, or keep them cleaner, and manage the problem rather than kick it down 101.
So what happened with, so we designated the Ray's area, and then apparently there was problems that they didn't pick up after themselves, or they didn't break camp, or what? What was it that went wrong between last meeting and now?
You know, we didn't realize, at least I don't think Neighbor to Neighbor realized that that was any kind of a dumb deal. We kind of thought it was a vote of confidence more than anything else. And so I don't think anything new has happened there. We have plans, we have the writings on rules and regs. The two sticking issues for us are, one, liability, and, you know, I don't think Neighbor to Neighbor is in a situation where we can assume any liability for what happens in this, don't call it a camp, but camp.
Well, that's the number one question right there. I mean, at least that was the first question to me, is where is the liability? We spent months trying to get it to where people can roller skate at the meeting. So the liability on something like this has been my main question from they were. And also, if we do partner with N2N, like, you know, then we're taking on a liability, like, that's the number one question in my mind, is the liability. And I was hoping, that's why I was going to help my whole piece of that.
We don't have any framework, I don't think, for taking on any liability. We're not insured or anything.
I thought I had heard you were.
There is insurance, I think we ended up getting some insurance when I was involved in it.
I wonder what kind it is, whether it's Ian, whether it's, you know, Board of Directors' insurance or what, though. There's different, there's insurance, and then there's insurance, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I may be saying correct on that, but I would suspect if it's city property, that by default, the liability is the city. Well, and then for the state to mandate that there needs to be a place.
Well, it's not this, well, I think you're right. The state has kind of adopted the position of the courts and said that we can do the reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on them, but I think an outright ban is what they're saying is not tenable under the court holdings, which seems to be the case right now, but.
It seems like the liability would eventually go back to the state if they're forcing the cities to create a space.
Oh, you would think so, wouldn't you?
That would be valid.
Yeah, no.
One question. One of the things I'm kind of trying to put my head around is the, it seems like we're talking about two populations. It seems like N2N has kind of gotten to be friends with about 10 people who they've gotten to know and kind of have relationships with and can work with, and it's sort of like, that's those people, and they came committed to those people. And yet, what we have to do as a city is sort of also have this policy for the maybe larger groups or transients that are going to come through. And so I'm just a little bit confused about, so you guys take responsibility, I'm just saying you, you know, N2N takes responsibility for the 10 people, let's say, then how does that interface with whoever shows up? And how does that interface with our police, which actually probably do have the actual responsibility? Or the, and this is, I was glad you talked, John, about like Medicare and veterans benefits. It just seems like in the past, like, are there any other people who have like, it would just seem like other people have like greater expertise and perhaps responsibility than our little old city that doesn't have the skill set?
Again, yeah, I think it's a, it's a health issue and on different levels, and we're not, there's, you know, we don't have a health department, and the county and state do, and even the feds do. So what, anyhow, that's, so, yeah, I don't know. And then what I did hear from the meeting was that finding those resources and getting those resources to these people is difficult without a place they can be found and all this, and all this stuff. But the funny part is, that's, I don't think that's an address technically, so I don't know how they would still have an address or have a place that's a right.
Coast Community Health Outreach is providing.
Addresses?
Addresses.
Okay.
That is the mandate of Coast Community Health Outreach is to help them get services and investigate what services they're, they could benefit from, and help them bathe, give them vouchers, and. And you bring in different agencies all through the week. Yes, and we didn't want to bring in ADAPT. We don't have the addiction capabilities, and it was disappointing that ADAPT was not available, because a lot of our people we would want to send over there to start getting treated who are willing. So, you know, I don't know. The plan, the thought was to use that area at Ray's, and as you said, put some kind of a nice fence, we can, I'm working on that, to do that, to have dumpsters that Neighbor to Neighbor paid for, to be emptied periodically, a couple of porta-johns. Nearby is our Michael and Walt's house, and they already have several. We're going to try to build a Canastoga movable house, tiny house, to put on their property because they have a couple of others who need it. So there's a lot of enthusiasm, kind of grassroots volunteer-type enthusiasm to work on this problem, and I think the time is right. Right now, it's not very, there's not many people over there, really.
Which four would you provide?
Four.
Which four, that's how big you start someone, so.
Yeah. The other sticker is, okay, let's pretend we're homeless for whatever reasons, and we're over there in a tent, and we've got minimal possessions under a backpack, to pack up every day, pull your tent down, throw all your stuff on your back, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? You're going to go sit out in front of Ray's with your stuff. I don't know why, I don't understand why that's necessary. If we're monitoring that, and we have some guidelines on not letting people just camp there all summer, if we have a way of moving them from the three hopeful sites that were tens on the ground to perhaps little platform sites where they got more services and didn't have to pack up, and that was motivating, we, our goal is to move people through. The local people they're working on, we're going to get some people coming down 101 periodically. And I think there are some, there's been some discussion about how to handle these people that might be just saying, hey, I don't have any place, I want to stay for the night type of thing. I'm not sure I can answer that, but I know they've been talking about it. I haven't been privy to that discussion. But we would treat the populations a little differently, maybe, you know, say, okay, you can, you know, you can stay every night, but we have a spot or not.
And that's kind of what Ann was referring to, was that plan to separate the transients from the people who are permanent residents, which makes sense, I mean, it's two different kinds of services that they need.
Yeah. And so I don't know how to answer how they're going to separate those two and treat them differently. Maybe this whole thing may be a work in progress, and we may need to start with something where we're going, I hope this works, and see if it works. Like everything, amended as we go, as we learn. Maybe this will work, maybe that won't work. Maybe the community will say, this is wonderful, they're not in our way anymore, and they'll say, you know, no. I don't know, this, we're charting new waters. But I do think a small community that handles this problem in a reasonable fashion could set an example for the rest of the small communities in the whole state and make ourselves proud. And I have read of different communities that have been successful, and I think it just depends on the personality of the communities as far as, are there grassroots organizations in a community that want to help? If you didn't have N2N, then we would approach it, I feel, completely different for a time. They would be packing up every day.
I think, I think one of the literatures I read that was provided, I, maybe, is it in, and Lauren just got here, and I don't know if I could find it, but it seemed like there was a survey, because there are, you know, other cities, you mentioned resources at N2N, but many cities have got, what's it called? Not the Salvation Army, but maybe it is a Salvation Army or a, or a mission, or, you know, where you already got organizations dedicated to helping people who are down under luck. And, but then I felt like I read in these materials that a lot of the population says they don't want to stay in those type of places. And again, it's, that to me is a little tail wagging the dog-ish, where, you know, they're, they keep, you know, they, I'm sorry, I don't mean to marginalize, but, you know, the folks who are out there are saying, well, I, you know, they want to pick and choose which option they have, which, you know, we all like to do that, but we don't all get to do that. So I just, sometimes, even when you set up these things, you're still going to be left with X percent is going to say, no. So, yeah, I don't know how to address that.
Well, then they end up packing up every day, and they're in that part of the camp.
Yeah, and those organizations, though, those are private organizations that help these individuals, not a, not a local government, not a city. So that's where, again, we get back to the city resources that are being dedicated to this, which is.
So if we don't, say we didn't have N2N, then our resources would be used every morning to roust them and to make sure that they didn't come back before the time. So I won't, I question how much resource we have to do that.
Well, there's a.
They're not going to be like Johnny on the spot wanting to get out of there and.
But I thought the stipulations were from N2N. I thought that we made, you know, we said that this is the area, and then N2N said, we will help you out if you fit these guidelines. Not that, not anything but that. And I mean, I thought that the city, like, we, we, we say, you know, we knit the area so that we've had some options, because we had nothing before, and now things keep, you know, rolling towards N2N, but where does, where does CCH stop? Or where does Coast Community Health stop on the number of people they help? Or, like, you know, like, you take and shower people and help people, but how come that, like, where's the gap on that? Or how come N2N and CCH can't combine their forces a little bit more?
Good question. We're trying to, we really are. There's been a turnover in outreach at Coast Community. They just recently rehired two people, and Lisa Cobb is heading up that department, probably a lot of you know her, she's been around a long time. And so it's revving up again. They don't have funds to give out short of maybe gas cards and transportation and bus tickets, sleeping bags, stuff like that, food, vouchers, but they are mandated to help people out wherever way they can. A lot of what they do is try to sign them up for programs that they weren't signed up for. And so Lisa's invited to. And so Lisa's invited to our next meeting and she said she would come and we're gonna try to coordinate. We also have put out a feelers, N2N has put out feelers and Lauren, you can, I'll put up on this one, to the churches and to get all the local churches to begin, uh, again, an interfaith council, which I think was started prior to COVID and see if we can get the churches involved, as, you know, volunteer organizations.
You know, I think, I think that's one of our biggest disconnects right now, is everybody wants to help. But there's, there's part of my brain that's like, well, the city's a, a business, so to speak, and how do you choose, you know, where to put these funds? And funds being time of, of staff or of all the staff or us sitting down and having this workshop. And so that's the hair we need to split. It seems to me like there's a bunch of people that wanna solve this problem, but maybe we're trying to intermingle them too much where the city, you know, wants to make this work, but, but what can we do? Like until we answer the liability question, what can the city offer? Until we answer that. Well, I guess, I guess part of it reads for.
You might have to come up, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, but why?
I'll present. I'm, I'm Lauren Kessler, I'm president of that band and I live at 1090 Paul Street, Port Arthur Door game. Uh, one, one of the things that's happening in, in cities that are trying, and, and like I said at the, at the last city council meeting, this is not a one, two, three answer issue. Okay, it, it's, we took eighteen months or, you know, eight months just to, I mean, Gary can tell you, just, we, what do we, what can we do? We don't have any money, we don't have any this, what can we do? And our focus was to start helping them individually. So this is not an overnight help thing and unfortunately, you know, John had two weeks to come up with the ordinance and everything else. But here, here's the, what, what cities are trying to do. They're trying to focus on just the same quandary you are. We're a little city, we don't have a lot of excess funds. We, what can we do? What can we focus on? And my idea and N2N's idea, uh, is that together with community outreach and Coast is gonna be a big part of that, because part of what we're doing is we're offering a service to some of these people who are coming to town. And the offer is, we will help you, give you a hand up. We're not gonna give you money, we're not gonna, maybe some food. Uh, and as, as you saw what John passed out today, or you got in the email today, they all got all that stuff. Yeah, okay. So right now, we have a set of rules. And when they come into our camp, they have to follow those rules. And the idea is that if they don't, and, and, uh, the police student was involved with something today, that somebody walked into camp and the guy said, no, you can't do that here, and he started throwing cans around and being nasty to other people, and they called the police. Not me, not junkie public, the neighbors called the police and it wasn't the first time this week from what I understand. Is that correct? Maybe somebody else you actually had to take down the phone.
And Chief, if you are gonna talk, you should probably get on the microphone.
But I, but I'm just saying, they, they are, now they understand that we're trying to help them. Now, help meaning with the outreach program through, uh, what Tanya has, can do because of some of her skills and people she knows, uh, with her outreach background from her time at Coast and other places, what Coast can do and everything else, we're able to communicate and help them get back on their feet with agencies such as the VA. We've turned people back into citizens, solid citizens, working for a living, paying taxes and no longer hidden and lost in the inbursts because they didn't have an address. Roseburg told Co- Coast, now this is an organization that's supposed to be helping people. We're from Coast, we have a gentleman here, he needs some healthcare, uh, you know, does he have an address? That's like, that's like the, uh, now, when they send out a resume, you know, they cast out for a resume and it comes in, the computer says, oh, you don't exactly have four point, four point five years of doing something and they, and they kick you out. Doesn't say that you've been in that industry for twenty years, but you have four point five, uh, years of, of working and, and they throw you, the computer throws you out. That's what a lot of people do, a lot of things do, a lot of iconic, you know, programs do. And the V, this is the VA. We had two Vietnam vets that were treated this way. They absolutely didn't have an address, the VA at Roseburg wouldn't even talk to us. That's when Coast decided to give them the address. In less than three months, that gentleman was back on his feet, bought a car, he was, he wanted to stay. He's been here ten years. You've seen him on the street, he works. Of course, he couldn't get a job where he was getting a, a bank account or anything because he didn't have an address. So he was working off the books, but you see him and he wanted to stay here, he liked Port Arthur. And, but he couldn't get a, he couldn't rent a place, even whatever was available, because he didn't have any background or history in renting.
That was all done without the city.
Pardon?
That seems like it was all done without the city.
Yeah, that was all done without the city. And in fact, so far, and just to let, make sure that everybody understands, we've done it without city money. City help, absolutely. Well, the, being able to put the porta potty where we did, thank you for that, uh, and, and some other things, allowing us to extend the time of where we are right now at the site, uh, that was the city. But now, now with the law in place, we need to start working as a team to start working with people. If they don't wanna follow our rules, they can spend the night and then tomorrow morning, it's sign and arm.
Who's rule?
Oh, the rules.
No, but I, no, no. I mean, I've been, but, but.
How long have we had each rule set outside?
I can tell you.
About, about.
I'm asking, I'm asking. You guys are talking about.
Yeah, and you gotta talk in one word.
I feel that who's gonna enforce that? Chief and his two officers keep getting called because we have problems, you know, not enforcing your rules, not the rules the city had.
No, that was the question, not who's gonna enforce whose rules? Like these are N2N's rules, right?
Right.
So I can't ask it nicely, so who, who, I, but I mean this, like, it's just one of those questions, but who is N2N to make those rules? Like what recognition or what, like what kind of meat is that? Like what can the city say to be like, oh, it's N2N's rules, we are free and clear of this? Like how can we, that, and there it lies, the issue. Okay, you're not. And, and, and understand that liability for this law, uh, because you put in an ordinance now, you are liable. I mean, you know, the city is liable because of the law, that's, that's, and, and, uh, you have to have someplace for them to stay. Okay, that, that is, that's the basic tenet, you have to have someplace that's safe for them to stay. I'm not saying that it needs to be comfortable and we're not making it comfortable.
I'm actually not sure.
I, I.
Yeah, I.
More rules make it more liable.
Well, no, again, I, I, I don't know that it requires us to have a safe place for them. We just have to, the only place that, the only thing that's safe from is from prosecution for illegal camping, more or less. It's, it's a.
Well, John, you're, you're a lawyer, so what, what is.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, but what is your interpretation of the law?
We don't actually have, we don't have a particular place for them to go.
Okay.
It's gonna block people's time, so you're not allowed regulations throughout your city. We don't have to have a place for them to go.
Okay, so, uh, somebody, a, a police officer comes up on somebody and he's, he's camping here, okay? What does a police officer say to them?
Police officer cannot.
What do you say?
Police officer cannot remove them or usher them along unless there is a place for them to go.
Okay. That, well, there you go.
So we don't have to have it, it's just if we want to usher them along, then we have that.
Correct, there has to be some place for them to be. It doesn't have to be a specific place. You can have rules throughout your city and some jurisdictions, that's what they're adopting. They're adopting zoning areas where you can camp here, you can't camp there, you have to have so many feet between you, you have to move every amount of hours. But there isn't a specific camp in town that is set up for that. And it's just a choice that jurisdictions are making.
So can we, can the city lease that property to N2N and then it becomes up to them? Then they have some authority over the property, they have a way to enforce their rules.
Here lies the problem, if the city does that, when you lease something for a public purpose to a private entity, the city is still on the hook liability line.
Is it a public purpose?
Yes, it's, it's, it's taking away, it's taking us away from, it's taking us off the hook in a sense, but it's not as good as moral.
Well, but, I mean, it's to serve a certain group of people, not the entire city, so.
Correct. I believe that based upon the case law that I think, no, we can't, but the city would still be liable. If there was, if there was a constitutional issue, it would call back on the city.
Yes.
It seems to me like there's really no way around our liability. And, you know, from reading the, the information that, that John put out, it sounds like that's still really up in the air with the courts, um, you know, so there's no sure way.
Grants Pass, I, I don't know if you know, Grants Pass, actually last week, were told, no, you, you, what you did is unconstitutional. So. So do you guys do background checks? No. So how, like, so if, like.
Well, we're not, if, with the mutual.
You don't, I mean, what are you gonna do?
That's, no, but that's what I mean, that we're just, it seems like it's kind of a gamble.
No, that, and again, from the, as a, as a manager, the, you know, for me and the, the way I've read, you know, the, the cases and stuff, they just seem to say it's a minimum, it's a very, and there's also a publication put out by the League of Oregon Cities that summarized all this as well. There's, there's not a lot we have to do, um, so we're not required to do a lot and that to me is fortunate from a management point of view. And what we're being asked by, from neighbor to neighbor is to commit resources to tend to the population and that's where it's a little difficult, um, so that's.
Wouldn't we be doing less resources if we allow them to manage?
It, it's possible and you, you know, you asked the question of, and again, I haven't heard from Chief Hobart, but I, I have a relationship with a retired law enforcement officer who has had experience with this kind of population back in Medford. And he, he actually said that if you do, um, you know, do the, the work in the morning, uh, that it will be effective. So, um, that's his experience in one city, but that's what he told me, um, which helped in, inform my decision, no disrespect to Chief Hobart, who, but I, I, I think Chief Hobart might have the same opinion, uh, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Can we actually hear from Chief? I'd love to have him come up here and help us understand from his perspective. Cause I've, I've, um, I feel like what we're hearing from Lauren and you guys is there's really like an intent or a desire to help and that the idea of managing and bringing resources in, especially I think the new Coast, Coast Community Health Resources potentially could help diffuse situations and could lead us to a place where maybe it will be less resource intensive for the city. But I would like to hear from the chief, your perspective and, and, and if you have any ideas about alternative solutions, given what we're, where we're at with the, just to make sure we're hearing all.
I have zero ideas about alternative solutions. And as far as, um, us enforcing a new set of rules or a adopted set of ordinances, it just comes down to a simple staffing question. There's not a body on day shift here, other, I don't usually say this in public, but I'll say it now, other than four days a week, especially during the school year, Monday through Thursday at the moment, we've been downed a body since Levi left half a year ago. And being able to just snap your fingers and have somebody at eight AM come do something that needs to be done in an ordinance, uh, structure is not gonna happen. This doesn't exist. But what I have is bodies that I have to, um, smartly and logically place where I need them, which is call, call out or heavy call loads, third, Friday night, Saturday night. I have somebody working right now, day shift, Sunday through Wednesday. And in the summertime, when I'm back up to full staff, when our new person who we hired from Washington is a whole person, because he's going through work and training right now, I'll probably switch that day shift person through a Monday through Thursday schedule because that's when the school needs it more than anything, working traffic and being available for school calls, et cetera. So my point is that would be, I feel, it was only about four days in a given week because there was somebody on day shift who could actually do what they would probably need done. And the rest of my staff has to be swing shift when the heavy call of this.
So, but I, what I'm trying to get at here, Chief, is, um, like we had to pass that ordinance or we, that John put, put forward. And so that ordinance, if we didn't have N2N, that ordinance, if we wanted to enforce it would require, or we would have to have you do something that what you're saying is you probably can't do to begin with. So now we're hearing these guys coming in and saying, oh, well, we can help with some of that. And I guess what I'm trying, because they're offering, I think, to go there every day and kinda keep an eye on it, whatever. So what I'm asking you is, do you think, I mean, could that help you eventually, these resources get pulled in possibly? Or I know you have.
People who are having problems, neighbor to neighbor, for instance, if they're dealing with something that is not an emergency, but it needs to be dealt with, it may just stack and be, have to be dealt with when I have a person actually on duty, not gonna send somebody on overtime for ordinance issues that are not, are not an emergency, is my point. So likely when issues come up that need to be dealt with that aren't an emergency, they may wait till the afternoon or early evening till I've got a person actually on duty to deal with. That's just the reality of working here with not enough people.
Yeah, and the experience I spoke of was a resource, a law enforcement, resource-rich environment. Chief, have you, are you hearing anything in, uh, for instance, like on city manager, I have a listserv where I get different bits and pieces from other city managers? Are there, are you, you know, are you hearing anything, success stories from other agencies on how they're dealing with this? I know you shared with me some experience at Grants Pass and then we just heard Lauren, you said with it recently that Grants Pass was told, or was it?
They, they appealed, they appealed this, the lawsuit.
Okay.
And, uh.
Oh.
And, and at which.
The lawsuit, they already lost.
They've already lost, but they appealed it and the ju, three judges said, no, you can't, it is uncon, what you did, what you did and what you want to do is unconstitutional.
Anyway, Chief, I don't know if you've heard my question or if I need to repeat it, but.
No, I heard.
Any, any success stories at any level at, at your law enforcement?
What he's just speaking of right now, it did set Grants Pass back a bit. Who knows if the Supreme Court will even hear the case and will know more by about December. But the two cases have, no, I'm not hearing of any big successes, but being, as I spent time in the valley, what happened in Grants Pass a couple of months ago when things got cleaned out for purposes of having vote nick, I go by the same areas now where there were tents three, four months ago and they're back up again now. They're just winding up their porta-potties and call load and read the police logs and it's just pretty much the same as it was four, five months ago.
I heard a really interesting article last week, it was like the name of the interest or something, it was about how Texas is actually having success. And what is, the gist of the article just boiled totally down is that they don't have the Supreme, they don't have that circuit court decision here. So what they're doing is they're using kind of heavy police to clear people, but they've also invested heavily in the social services. So like they're doing both at once. And that's what's being successful there, because they're saying, oh, like, you know, California is investing in, you know, there, it was kind of this big picture article. I was thinking, gosh, that's really interesting and maybe that's like, you know, what you'd wanna get toward is sort of a carrot stick thing, but you, you only can do that if you have both of those pieces. Uh, or, you know, maybe you wanna have both of those pieces eventually, we don't have that, but it sort of gets me back to the, we're in a work in progress and it seems like, you know, where we want to go is to have more services for these people and also to not have the problems like for the, for Raze and, um, that does seem like a big thing for our community too.
Cause I was gonna ask the city. Cause I was gonna ask the city council, um, what you're hearing from your constituents. Um, it's kind of what I wonder if you can, if you feel free to, if you care to share.
I would personally buy there, four times now since that, we made that decision. And it looks bad almost every time, I didn't go today, but John's went by, I've had Officer Perry write emails. And the, and the fact that it's being picked up every day, I don't think so, there's no way. There's days worth of trash there. And I get that we have problems with it, but it's just, I don't feel that, I don't know, it's, it's not gonna be easy.
Yeah, and one of the rules says no tarts in any fashion and do not attach anything to trees, and I don't, I don't.
You're a carpe diem.
Yeah, so I don't.
But we did hear from Dr. Lowery that they were in the lurch and nobody knew how, you know, if they should start pushing or like, until we have this workshop.
Well, didn't we give them the rules? John, John gave over the.
John.
Those are, those are, those are end to end rules, I didn't give them, those are what they, what they said to do.
And they, I think, we hadn't had this workshop and none of them was a hundred percent clear. I mean, basically what we're looking at is the state dropped it in our lap from the feds or whoever passed it down. Now we're a town of a thousand people trying to tackle the problem, when we just heard we can't even have enough staff to deal with the cheap people that we have in our community. And therein lies the problem. Perry.
Okay, so, couple things. First of all, I just wanna say, I think that what you're trying to do is amazing. And I really, really appreciate the attitude of treating them like individuals and helping each individual with their issue, you know? And I, I just think that's wonderful. I think, um, we're small enough that, you know, it's like, we can make a difference. It's like Dr. Lowery said, I, I think we could really manage this really well. Um, so I think there, there's a lot of good things that can happen. So what I'm confused about is we're all kind of sitting here talking and just throwing around ideas. What is, what's the problem we're trying to solve, other than just the homeless issue, which is a little big? Um, you know, what is, what issues are we trying to solve here? One is liability, correct? Um, so we need to figure out how, who we make responsible? I mean, how, I think that's probably the first issue, is the liability. Because what, what they do within the camp, we don't want anything to do with, correct? We don't wanna put our hands on the camp, because I think that would increase our liability.
And we don't, we have rougher, the city has rougher rules than end to end with that.
Right, and we have enough trouble.
Kick somebody out if they're not abiding by the rules.
Exactly. And, you know, we've said forever, we don't have an ordinance enforcement, and we don't know how we're gonna get one yet. So we can't expect, you know, our officers to enforce fair rules at this point, we just can't. Should be great down the road, but we can't. So what is it that is our core issue that we need to solve?
I think here, that's liability, uh, uh, we are talking about visual blight, we're talking about conflict on like Raze, uh, or that that business is having a high level of pressure on it.
But is that our problem to solve if end to end is running the camp?
It's our responsibility.
It's our right away.
Don't say it's our right away. Even if we give them a lease, it's our right away.
And I can't, I, part of me is wondering why, why does end to end, you know, again, I don't wanna say you want this location, but isn't there a, part of what I was talking about with these missions or salvation armies, what have you, that there's a, it's a private piece of property, is there no private piece of property for end to end to run its operations? That end to end has approached us by saying, we'd like to put these facilities in the city right away. And, you know, I, it's, Doc Lowery, you've got a CCH building, I, you know, what do we have, a handful of folks? I can easily see them on your footprint, but, you know, I, I, I don't mean to be brash or anything, but.
But here, I mean, it's real quick though, what if they don't wanna listen to CCH? We still have to city have to give them a place to live.
We don't have to give them a place to live.
At night we do.
Yes, and, and, but, but that's about it.
That's what I'm trying to say, so it really, if they get tired of the rules at CCH, they're kind of ruled of neighbor to neighbor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, yeah, no, I.
It seems like that's sort of what it seemed like when we made the decision last time, that's why it was kind of good to just put people there, because then people would be there, but if they don't like the rules, then they're just gonna go off and alter the Heidi Hills all over the city. And then I don't know if that makes it worse or better, or, you know, to me it would be worse, because then we can't reach them to have the resources and all that kind of stuff, but.
Yeah, from a management point of view, a single location is a lot more manageable than multiple locations all over the place. So that was part of my rationale for trying to at least identify one place.
Yeah, and we have the one place so far, I mean, granted, it's an outdoor place.
There are, uh, so some of the stuff I've heard is, you know, some customers aren't, um, comfortable being approached, because they, they do approach, they're not comfortable with that. Um, and again, the staff speaks freely to me, they do not like the extra chores they have to do. Um, and, and that's why I was thinking if they could get in that adapt building, if there was a building where they had their own dedicated restrooms, that they didn't have to use the restrooms and they could, and then also, you know, that adapt building, I think it's got a fenced yard, if they could, you know, be in that yard and have a day use area. But again, I, I know I'm beating a dead horse maybe with adapt, but I don't know, if adapt is, is adapt is kind of kaput, then maybe there's an opening there, I just, I'm just.
Well, I think it's.
It is a workshop.
It's gonna be a while before, even if something comes available with adapt, it's gonna be a while. In the meantime, I suggest that we let end to end give us a, a six month plan. We allow them to have the tools they need to manage the camp, they need a dumpster, they need a porta potty, um.
A fence. I think a fence would be.
And, and, and we wanna post signs there as well. So the reminder is, you know, you're here under the auspices of whoever, end to end, city, port order, whatever you wanna put on the sign. And, you know, here are the rules you will abide by.
So are we comfortable with before, because it's gonna be end to end's responsibility, um, to hopefully be able to find a location, a building, which of course will take some time and money. But are we comfortable with saying in the meantime, the lot next to Raze is the one we're designating? And we need to find ways to make that lot work? Or are we focusing on finding another space and who's making the rules about making it work?
It seems like we, we need something to happen like now, that people are homeless and they're in, they're sleeping every night. So trying to make that situ, that place work, to me, makes the most sense. The law enforcement, to me, you, you either have to be there every single morning and roust them, or they're gonna stay. Or occasionally you have a call, you know, so you're gonna definitely be there seven mornings a week. Do you get, I mean, if you're gonna make them pack up.
That won't, that won't happen, but.
And then.
A certain amount of days per week, probably, yes, that could happen, but not seven.
And then they're hanging out all day still.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I'm just saying that if there's a way to make it to where there's a fence there, if they're behaving and following the rules, they get to hang out at this spot during the day, keep their stuff there. If they don't, then they're over here. Every morning they gotta pack up, end to end, ends up being apart, or the homeless, however they organize it, they have, those people have to pack up. So you either follow the rules and you get to stay here, or you don't, you're over here. And, and we give it a try for, for six months, we give it a timeline. And in the meantime, end to end would be looking for the adapt building or their own property. But at least we've got something that's, we're working, we're trying to evolve with, where I don't know what the other thing would be.
Yeah.
You know, what is it?
I think.
If we leave it up to the way it is right now, then there would, how, how good is that? I don't see that we're, we're, we're moving forward the way it is right now. It's gonna just get trashy again, they're gonna stay there all day, we are still gonna have calls there.
I really like that idea of having the, the, the people who want to commit to change, you know, give them some extra, you know, give them a storage unit or something like that, and those who are transient, you know, like, ask them to move on. But I think that, I think you guys are on the right track, and we can, you know, try to solve the homeless problem for months and not do that. We just have to solve the problem of making this work as much as we can, as, while they are trying to find a better solution.
We need, obviously, to get a solid proposal back and properly vetted, because there's gonna be a hundred mad people in the room, regardless of how we do it. And I always feel like if we advertise it and get them here before we make the call, that would be best. Cause a lot of people left the room last time thinking, oh, there's not gonna be a homeless camp. There just could be an area so that, that, you know, it gives the, the police force a way to, to deal with things, because there was absolutely nothing to be done. And now I'm going away from this meeting knowing that, like, this time tomorrow, people are gonna be talking about the new homeless camp behind Raze. So we do have to consider that too, like, all the people that aren't in the room right now that are going to be here as soon as they hear about it. And I just feel like there's a lot of meat left on the bone. And what, what do we have on the table right now? We have Raze property, there's no enforcement going on, but we do have the ability to say, I'm sorry, you can't be here. You can be here under these stipulations, and if not, then, then we can ask them to leave town? Or is that not how that works?
I don't think that's how it works, I think you just trespass them and then you get into the court system. And I don't know how, um, how long about, how long of a hold, how long of a hold anybody that's trespassed from some public property would be held, even if we took them down there and processed them and stuff. So, um, and again, so, so we're at the, you know.
Well, if.
We're at the downhill end of, by the VA of the public health and of the court system. So, um, that's, that's kind of where we find ourselves.
What, does any of like the new funding that was just passed at the state level help us with resources anyway? Does anybody know? What, um.
One, one of the problems that we have in this county is that our county government felt that there was no need to put in any numbers for homeless. And it's been that way since 2017.
Wow.
So we are not getting any fund. Now, we are getting funds, uh, because we've been speaking up and we sent them numbers that it was supposed to come from the county. Okay? And that, and by the way, what really upsets me, it, it, not that I don't care about the, the homeless, but it, it also zero homeless children in the schools, that's the one that really kicks me, is that they, that, that's why we haven't gotten any funding.
I, I would argue that, um.
You might need to come on up, Doc.
Can you, here goes.
Yeah.
That's the.
Thank you, Chief.
We're gonna have a variable number of homeless, some local, permanently local, some, um, transient, um, every month of the year. And that the policing costs ideally would be less if we have them managed in a, in a, in a site, than if you're chasing them all around town, um, and, and, or equal, uh, equal. Neighbor to neighbor is not really, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, uh, is not asking for any money from the city. We're just asking for a location and a vote of confidence, uh, and, uh, and, and we'll, we wanna take care of the rest. Um, we can pay for a dumpy dumpster to be changed, we can pay for a couple of, uh, johnnys. Um, that's gonna be a star, at least in controlling the problem. We can, I promise you, I'll get a fence, nice looking fence put up, set twenty feet back from the Raze corner there, uh, and so the people can enter and exit off of Idaho, which would be fine. Uh, we can even improve that exit entrance area right there. That will take care of some of the eye sore problem. If you don't manage it, they're gonna be floating around town anyway as they always have. Uh, they're not gonna just evaporate.
One, one of the biggest issues, and if you read some of the articles that John sent out, especially the one from Phoenix, uh, yes, Phoenix, the homeless problem. Who'd bother? But.
Arizona, it's a problem.
There you go. Uh, but the, and this article was written by a joint, a joint project by the City of Phoenix Police and the State of Arizona Psychology Department. And, uh, what every city did in this country, and some of them are still doing, are they, they saw the starting, they didn't do anything. And they let different precincts handle it and do what they wanna do, move them down the road to the next precinct or the next county or whatever they did. Anyway, and they said, that, that attitude and that has to change, we need to be proactive to work with people. Because, yes, there are some drug addicts, yes, there are some alcohol, alcoholic people. Uh, after three years, many, many, many of them have become psychotic because of the way they're just living. Um, but they're still people, and they're not all druggies, they're not all outies, they're not all mentally, you know, deranged. They, they are people and they can be reached, we, we have reached seven of them. Seven.
That's amazing.
Okay. And, and it wasn't easy, some, uh, some of them, and Gary can tell you, he, cause he was working before I was really got deeply involved. It, it, it's, it's, excuse me, bits and starts, but we've gotten seven people to go home, to go off the streets and are doing things. So it, it, and the latest one was this young lady who was, uh, named.
Mary.
Huh?
Is her name Anna Stacey?
Yeah, it should be used next.
Oh.
You should know better.
Well, I, I think that if we were, I mean, this idea that we're talking about that Wiz has brought up, or the, which is have a trial period, because the alternative is.
Chaos.
Do nothing.
Or just the way it is.
Or the way it is.
Well, but the, the way it is, you've helped seven people and the city hasn't really, I'm sorry to, you know.
I'm sorry.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that's, why, anyhow, sorry, but.
So I'm looking at my city council meeting, and I don't see anything on this for homeless stuff. So are we passing this on until August now? Oh, um, I was asking.
Right, you're looking at the.
Cause we can't make any decisions in a workshop.
Right.
So, I mean, ultimately, what are we looking to do here to, oh, we keep talking about.
Well, I was about to say that, I think if we were going to actually consider this idea, that we would absolutely need like a memorandum of understanding with that organization, that the chief would feel comfortable with, that you guys would feel comfortable with. Um, I mean, that would be the minimum we do. I appreciate very much that the organization is listening, has listened to what the community issues are and is trying to address them, you know, like the visual blight, trying to keep people out of Raze, or maybe make that part of the rule, like, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you manage the Raze situation.
No.
And we have other people in our community that have mental health issues, you know, that are not necessarily in that population.
And that's a big problem too.
And I don't know, you know, what's the difference? You got, all I know is the city, we are not, you know, we're, we're not, we don't have the expertise to deal with this in the way that Coos Curry or that Coos, Coast Community Health does, and maybe some of the individuals at end to end.
And, and if adapt gets, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, thank you. So, um, Mr. Mayor again, and, and everyone else, we're not making decisions. Actually, Lauren and I met and we wanted to have this workshop to kind of get some direction to know whether, you know, what, what, because we're all, we're all kind of rushed when we adopt the ordinance, and it was go work with end to end. So Lauren and Tanya, if I have met, we've given you what we've come up with so far, which is, you know, a little bit more than what you had before, but what we've heard tonight, if I could just summarize, is that they're looking for, um, a permission from the city to have porta potties and a dumpster and a fence. If I could summarize it that briefly, I've heard, um, Gary say, do a trial run for a time, and it seemed like that was something that, and you were, uh, fomentable too. And so it's kind of like a probationary period of this stuff. So, um, we were just seeking not a decision, but just kind of some direction. And so, um, I can work with neighbor to neighbor, and, and Mr. Mayor, you were saying, please, give us more definitive stuff, because some of the things that are here just really aren't happening, and I, you know, like.
But yeah, and actually.
No charts, no garbage, so, so, and, and Commissioner Gray, it's not on the agenda for next week. No, we wouldn't have this sussed out by next week, but it, it is a work in progress. Um, so I think what we'd be trying to do is work towards some terms that address the concerns of the citizens. And we have three decent terms to go on, and then we'll keep working on this, me and Lauren and Tanya and Doc here. Doc, what do you?
I was gonna say, can we, um. I was gonna say, can we, um, can Neighbor-to-Neighbor write a rough draft, more formal proposal with your help, um, and then bring it to one of the meetings coming up?
Yeah.
Something a little more definitive.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if the insurance aspect, if, if there was an insurance aspect that we could look into that would address the liability, for whether it would be on end-to-end or the city or both.
She was, can they sign waivers? Do they hold any waiver? If somebody signs a waiver of liability, if they're gonna stay there, does that carry any weight in dollars? It's just, you know, a form.
I think probably, the capacity issue, the person has to have a capacity.
Yeah, yeah, but... Yeah, so, but it's worth a try.
Always worth a try.
I mean, you know, hey, at least, and it would, but it could possibly at least make them think that they are waiting there, you know.
Well, another city's gotta be dealing with this liability issue, there's gotta be something going on.
Oh, we all are, and there's no good answer. And that's what it is.
Whoever wrote this did a nice job growing to the city. And that's what, that's what Tim asked, was, did somebody sue the state? No, they're not gonna sue the state, because you ruin their community rules, it's not the state.
And I think the other thing I would like to see in the agreement, and I'm just gonna speak, I know that, um, Councilor Webb was bringing this up last time, is what's the ultimate goal? And I think, you know, that was a really good and important question that we still haven't dealt with. And, you know, the ultimate goal is not that we, um, you know, we don't want probably a permanent camp there, and so the, the goal would be to have a solution in the interim as we're, as the community is marshaling the resources to come up with a better solution. Um, and I don't, I don't know, something, just so that we have a purpose, and, and maybe we need to have a, like, a bigger, longer discussion on what the goal is ultimately, you know, but at least...
At least, yeah, it's not a good attempt.
Yeah.
At what the goal would be, and then we can discuss it with the mayor.
Yeah. Well, good, really, for the council and everybody else, that's all I had on, on this issue, and I just only had a couple of, one brief update from the city manager, and then we could end the workshop, if that's okay.
Everybody heard Hank, that we are understaffed for this project. So, like, there'll be times at eight o'clock in the morning when we will not be available. I know that, yes, if this is gonna go, I gotta plug that as much as possible, because we're, we're talking about something we know that we don't have the staff to pull off, so...
Well, we already passed the ordinance that says it, and we're not doing it, because we had to, and we can't do it, right? So that's what I'm trying to understand, what's the difference?
Technically, why can't we have public, I'm just saying this, why can't we have public works? There's city employees, why can't public works every day go and say, hey, they, they're on every single day, seven days a week, at seven-thirty in the morning? We always have somebody. I'm just, I'm just, the reason, the reason might be related to collective bargaining.
Yeah.
But regardless, um, I, I have, I have no problem going there and, uh, asking, reminding them what the ordinance is. I may even have citation authority, so, um, and I think it would be a matter of minutes, um, you know, to, to do that. But, but regardless, I just, um, I, again, I...
Yeah.
We're still limited resources, yeah, we're still limited resources.
That makes, that's a perfect...
So that, that's a perfect reason to work together, to try to do it.
And then if in six months it didn't work, then that would be what we would do.
While Neighbor-to-Neighbor is here, if I could, because Commissioner or Councilmember Webb and Velice repeated it, is what's the ultimate goal? What's Neighbor-to-Neighbor's ultimate goal with the population?
Our, our ultimate goal is to give them and provide a place and the city, and to help the city abide by the rules that they have to abide by, whatever they are, but yeah, to provide them a place to stay. Uh, timeframe is, is, uh, as short as possible, but there are, though, and the other, other aspect is, the secondary aspect is, is for those who are looking for help, who are willing, are staying here, and that's who we've been helping. We haven't been helping transients, they seem to move on, because they realize they're working to make them stick by the rules. That's why there's only, uh, three, three tents in the, in the, uh, in the camp, in the camp right now. There were seven or eight, now, now, now they're down to only three.
All right, so if I'm understanding the council, it's to, uh, continue working with Neighbor-to-Neighbor on some type of a short-term solution with some, uh, specific, uh, rules in place, uh, for the council to consider whether to adopt at a future meeting?
This might be rhetorical, but it would be really nice to clearly define what the city's obligation is to do this. You know, 'cause I mean, we hear, we're hearing about rules, but...
Well, that's gonna have to be on your part. Yeah, our obligation is very low, a very low bar for us, um, but, when we set that bar low, as you heard from the chief, we even have limited resources to get to that low bar. So what Neighbor-to-Neighbor is saying, you have limited resources to do, you know, the minimum, we might be able to help you maintain that minimum by doing more, if, kind of, if I could paraphrase, I'm just paraphrasing. So, um, and, and so, in, in that sense, there is value from the city to work with Neighbor-to-Neighbor and try to, try to get our, our minimum goals achieved by working with them. But, um, until we, until we get the actual pen on paper and the, and the things down, um, it's, it's still kind of amorphous, and, but that's what we're, but I feel like I have a better understanding of, of the council's roles, and also I, I can work with the limited timeline that you talked about, the probationary period. But I won't have anything for next week, um, so it'll probably be not till August that we get something.
And, and, and based on our discussion tonight, and, and, and believe me, we wanted to start a few things right away, and this is not, I, I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say throw water, cold water on everything. If you read the Phoenix article, moving too fast just to get things done can do more harm than need, than thinking that you're gonna solve it by doing, whether, whether you use force or whether you use somebody like Kahoots in Eugene, uh, you need to really put your focus together, and what is the city's goal? Okay? And, and, you know, that's what you guys have to think, what is your goal? We know we'd like to get a building, and we'd like to put housing in a building, and with that new law, that new law that I, I gave to John, uh, that passed in May, and by the way, from what I understand, the only bipartisan law that was passed, so this term in our legislature, uh, but it was that, that, that commercial, exist, existing commercial buildings, uh, not near residential areas can be used and turned into, uh, a short-term housing internally, in other words, so they're out of the weather, but it's transitional. And there is money, by the way, from the state right now for that. We aren't ready for that. Gold Beach and Brookings already have plans for that stuff, you know, shovel-ready plans. So they're gonna get some money right away for that.
So when you have a really small community with a housing problem, and you're looking at the whole community, how does that sit well when we're, you know, putting extra effort? Well, I'm just talking about the space and the, like, literally mechanical space to live. Like, as a city, or as the mayor, how can I feel good about promoting that and not using that space for someone that's a paycheck to paycheck?
Why haven't we done it yet?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm, 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 I'm agreeing with you. Why haven't we done it?
Because I worry about, you know, like, there's probably five hundred people or hundreds of people in town that are paycheck away from being behind Ray's.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And there's other people that we're giving opportunities to, and so I'm just, like, every step we take, like, we're having, we've had workshops and workshops on this, we have a lot of other city emergencies too, and that's why I'm really excited about the solid plan, because then we can move forward.
And, and, and by the way, Pat, that, our idea is for low-income housing overall, that's, but we're taking baby steps. I mean, when we started talking, that's what our goal was, we were gonna provide, get low-cost housing and build a couple of facilities, like the one down at the end of Arizona, uh, near, toward the end, I can't remember the name of it.
Peter Point.
Yeah, and, and we were, that's what we were thinking, small houses where people are likely built in Gold Beach over by Gary's Roadblocks.
Oh, that brings up, could we do a tiny house?
Why couldn't we? So here's what I would like to tell the city council on your, on your next week's agenda, you are, have a resolution to apply for a grant to rewrite our housing codes to allow for all that.
I saw that. And let me throw it out there that, like, Lauren and, and Dr. Lawrence, anybody in here would help, anyway. Like, we're, like, we're very compassionate, very good council, and, and we're just, I mean, I'm just trying to do, do diligence here, I'm not trying to be negative or do anything other than make sure that everybody in the community has a side.
Mr. Mayor, nobody beat themselves up more about what, where we needed to go, where we needed to start, than we did. Am I right, Gary? We, we, we would, we would actually argue with you, well, we, we need to do this, well, we can't do that. And home, and, uh, you know, we wanted to do it all, and you can't do it all in one time, especially in this, in a community the size. You can do it over time, but it's, it's gotta take time.
I would say the house, the answer to the housing question is we have to work on our water first before we can tackle that. And secondly, I would also want to just add to this conversation, I was really heartened to hear that Coos Community Health now is going to have these two professional new positions in. And so I would think that's a new addition to the mix that could really add professionalism and resources, and so let's just keep that in mind too, that, um, you know, I, I know that end-to-end has some really good people in it too, but as we all know, it's really hard for a little community volunteer organizations, I mean, they, we know they do amazing things in our town, and we couldn't go without them in Port Orford, and yet, we also know that, you know, there's kind of like the people burnout. So we're thinking sustainably, you know, it would be great to make sure that we work with that through twelve.
I have a question about the porta potty and the dumpster. Now, we have, we allowed the porta potty in front of Michael and Wolf's house. Would we be able to, what, what, what would it take to have a porta potty and a dumpster at the next to Ray's?
Uh, permit to use the city right of way.
So, end-to-end could do, uh, to have...
Yeah, sort of revocable permit that had conditions on it.
And then that would call on, on you, on the city staff?
Yeah. Oh, by the way, currently it would, because I actually heard there was a, a mo, a discussion, maybe by at least one city council member, those permits to occupy the city right of way at one point were a council-level decision, and then they were given back to the, or they were given to the administrator, and I actually heard someone was saying, they wanted to take back that thing, so, so currently it's an administrative decision, but it, it may change.
No, but that was me a couple weeks ago, and I wanted on this agenda.
Oh.
And I hadn't seen this agenda until...
Just now, just now.
Right now.
Was I gonna go to planning maybe? Did, was that?
No, it was, we took, we did, the right of ways, they used to be accepted, it was like, you know, Francis, this, that.
Was there talk about maybe a go to planning for...
No, there was talk about getting it, well, I wanted, I wanted council to talk about bringing it back because of things I've heard, and just, it wasn't that much work for us to say yay or nay, it takes a lot of heat off the staff.
It's not just that, ultimately, you will be hearing about it one way or the other, so it, it might be easier if you just know about it ahead of time and make decisions. So, it's, it's a, you know, again, it's...
And it goes back to the transparency thing, too, uh, to go for that, so...
So, anyway, that's all I had on the homeless workshop.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for listening, bro.
Thank you guys for your amazing work.
Sure. And then, and then I, if, if I could, I just have one administrative update from the city administrator. If you recall, we, um, did a resolution to apply for the grant with CPG for community buildings remodel, and that was based on an old, well, that was from 2019, we had our pick estimate of like one point three or four, and now it's at one point nine. The, the granting authority wanted us to re-calculate the figures based on current dollars and the Buy America Act and whatnot, where you have to buy American products with the federal money. So he, um, has a new estimate of one point nine, and I'm working with our grant, um, CCD, a guy named Lehigh. By the way, uh, I know there was a really good grant administrator at CCD on prior grants, but I'm very impressed with Lehigh, he's really, yeah, he's really good. So, people were worried if there'd be a drop-off with the change of personnel, but that hasn't been in my, in my, so, that's really all I had, everybody. There's a new agenda out for next week, uh, it's fresh off the press, take a look, it's gonna be really dazzled by the agenda.
Five hours?
Pat's already the pad. No, it shouldn't be, it's, we didn't even have Pat.
Don't say, don't say, don't say.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, but we're down.
Are we, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. John, seven up.